Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. This is the Thursday, September 18th, 2025, regular meeting of the Wasika School Board. It's 5:30 PM and we are in the central building, second floor conference room. And we will do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all the high school students that are here tonight. Thanks for coming. Um, approval of agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Payment of claims. Melissa.
I reviewed the August accounts payable and recommend payment of August accounts payable, including dental of $1,331,372.61 and August payroll in the amount of $930,748.38.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve payment of claims. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second to approve consent agenda. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Moving right along, informational items. Dr. Hutsbyth.
Good evening. This evening, I want to run through just a few quick things when it comes to our strategic plan work as we begin our school year, but then also run through some of our goals and work plan documents that we started talking about in our last work session. So you think about our strategic plan goals, learning for all, being welcoming and safe to our students and staff, having an effective and efficient operations and engaging our community, that's a big part of what we start with as we start a school year. Make sure everyone feels welcome, feels like they're coming back to a building that's clean, prepared, bright, and ready for our students to get learning. And so we're doing it, I'm excited about how we're starting off the year as I was bouncing around buildings the last few weeks, the introductory activities, getting to know each other, the assemblies, things that happen as the school year begins is always something that's time to celebrate. If you can believe it, a lot of our activities are already on the downswing of their fall seasons. You think about tennis and soccer and some of those things that are in the next few weeks already starting playoffs, but then we've got football and some of our other activities, plays and such that go well into the fall. So it's, we're always got something moving to support all of our students. Enrollment's tracking right where we thought it was going to. As of today, we're three students off of what we budgeted for in terms of what we're planning for for the fall with several more weeks here to go before we hit that October 1st where we clean everything up and make sure we know what our enrollment looks like for '25-'26. So no significant surprises as our school year starts for enrollment. As you can see from the agenda tonight, really been working hard on preparing our school year with all of our employment contracts, getting things caught up and up to date. I'm feeling very good about number one, the improvement of the contracts we've been able to offer and settle with with many of our employees, but also just what that's been able to do for our district budget right as we were able to plan that. So I think we're really hitting a nice threading of the needle here in terms of supporting our staff, but also supporting our district financial goals with that. And then, as I mentioned in my update yesterday, we'll start looking at some of our community engagement opportunities, some of the Coffee With Series and some of the school finance stuff that'll be rolling out here this fall that I'll be inviting board members to is kind of exciting to think about. So I think those are the, that's kind of the strategic plan type update. The other two things I wanted to reference here in my conversation is, Amy, if you go to my goals, one thing you'll be asked to approve here later on in the action items is my annual goals for '25-'26. And that was, this hasn't changed from last time when you saw them in the work session. So really working on continuing this strategic plan implementation, focus specifically on strategic progress, student success, and future readiness for all of our students are going to be really important. Community engagement, continuing to work through that, but specifically talking about and updates with the community and working through that board's three-year agenda, through that active involvement with the school board, you're going to see more invites, whether it works in your schedule or not this year, will be of course depending on your schedule, but to join me for building walkthroughs or to join me for things out in the community just to help continue to build that relationship with the board, with our community and myself as we're able to do that. It was interesting, as I've gone through these first few weeks of a sixth school year as the superintendent, some of those relationships have now just become so normal and standard that we don't want to get complacent with our community outreach. And so that's going to be a big focus of mine again this school year. Effective and efficient operations is goal number three, and that's going to be the long-term facility plan work to help continue with some of that effective work, making sure that our buildings are set up intentionally for the facility use that we need. The facility committee has a big meeting next week, the opportunity to have the first insight into what ICS found for their facility study. Kind of the positive news update on that is, I just talked to Jeff Jensen today and it looks like he secured a grant to help fund a lot of that assessment. So some of that will be able to be covered based on a grant that it sounds like is a positive, we'll receive that. So that could be a definite bonus for our district that we're able to get that assessment funded a different way. And then finally, you know, we know that with enrollment doing what it's doing, with budget inflation being what it is, having a long-term fiscal plan is going to be important for our school district. And so Sarah's been obviously doing, I would be humble enough to say she's doing a lot of the heavy lifting on this, but as we work together, supporting each other through what's the plan for our district going forward, that's going to be a big part of '25-'26. So nothing new with those goals. For me, the same thing we talked about last time. Any questions any board members have before it goes to the action items here later tonight? Okay, so then moving to their document, this one you do have in your packet because I wanted you to have a hard copy of it. This was the board three-year governance work plan that we talked about in the work session and essentially kind of cleaned it up a little bit based on what we saw last time. Couple significant changes, or I should say just things that we kind of clarified from last time, and I should have brought my redlined version, I apologize, but when you think about the annual board evaluation, we talked about some interest in engaging MSBA to look at that and see what we can continue to do better. I left that on there. The facility audit was on, the facility needs piece, working through that. And then as you scroll down to, I would say probably the public engagement was the one that gave us the most cause for conversation. We definitely want to emphasize our table at the fair, make sure that we're upping our game a little bit for what we're doing here at the fair next summer. Board member recognition and celebration. Interestingly enough, we got some staff feedback after our last discussion, and what if you tried this, what if you did that? And so I just put it on there as board member recognition celebration as a general focus. And then as we get through the school year, we'll talk about how we want to emphasize and celebrate and call out those folks that might even not even know they're getting recognized at board meetings, whether it's a thank you card, whether it's a, one of the staff members said, why don't you do a social media shout out when you post your, when you post your board meeting, say, you know, @soandso, we recognized you. So should be some really good things. And then I just added, and then coffee with the superintendent and board member is something that I think is going to be important for us as we continue to make those connections, particularly as you're going to hear from Sarah here in a few minutes, you know, the levy news this year is going to be good from a community perspective. It doesn't really change our bottom line any because it's kind of just shifting who's paying for what from the tax versus state aid, but it's going to be positive news. So as we continue to have that conversation with our community around what are our needs, what are our budgeting parameters and priorities, and how does the levy fit into that, I think when you are able to join me for some of those meetings, that's going to be helpful. First of all, be part of those conversations going forward. So that would be my recommendation based on our conversation last time, kind of to clean up and kind of get to work, I guess, on '25-'26 for the governance plan. Questions or thoughts on that? That will be on your action items again this evening as well.
Good.
Okay, that's all I had this evening. I know we have a lot to work on as we get through our meetings, so that's where I'll stop for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Sarah?
All right, I will start my financial report by directing your attention to the expenditure report at the back of your packet. I did bring preliminary, not audited, financial reports for '24-'25. I still do have quite a few audit entries to post, but I do feel like I have a bulk of the big ones incorporated into this report. But I do have three weeks left until the auditors are onsite and I intend to use every minute of them to get these numbers audit ready. But I just wanted to bring this to, you know, give you guys an idea of where we stand as of today. If you look at overall expenses for the general fund, we budgeted for about $27,750,000. And right now I have $27,400,000 of expenditures posted. So we're very close in our overall audit or in our overall budgeted numbers. We're slightly low in a few other categories, but we did shift some projects from '24-'25 to '25-'26 just based on timing of when we could get supplies or contractors or that type of thing to show up. And then the other funds look relatively healthy. You know, if you look at our trust fund, we're showing that we've only spent 3% of our budget. I know that that's an audit adjustment that I have yet to make is to record some of our scholarships payable. So again, by no means are these audit-ready numbers, but they should give a good picture of where we'll end up in the next couple of weeks as I work with auditors on our final numbers. And then if you shift your attention to our revenue numbers, again, overall in our general fund, we budgeted for $27,500,000 and our year-to-date revenue as of today is $27,600,000. So fairly close. A big factor in that budget difference is that Carol Anthony estate donation, which came in after we approved that revised budget in March. Otherwise, things look pretty close there. Food Service has revenues in excess of their budget just due to school lunches and federal and state reimbursement for those, so that's a positive. Otherwise, when I look at all of the other budget to actual numbers, I'm fairly pleased and confident with where we budgeted and ended up. And then if you want to just do a quick comparison, you can look at our general fund, actual revenues of $27,600,000 and compare it to that expenditure preliminary number of $27,400,000 and see that again, we're coming close to a break even overall for the school year or the fiscal year, sorry. Any questions on those reports? Okay, that's probably the last you'll hear about '24-'25 until the actual audit is presented, either at the December work session or the December board meeting. So no questions, then I will move right into my preliminary levy presentation. Just to give a quick timeline of the levy process, in August, the state opens the levy information system for me to enter certain inputs. And with that, they kind of spit out a 39-page preliminary levy report full of calculations based on all sorts of different factors, which we'll see on the next slide, Amy, if you want to switch, you know. It incorporates the market values within the Wasika County tax base, differences in class rates or property classifications. Also incorporates our enrollment, that in addition to factoring into our state aid, does factor into our levy. Sometimes it adjusts the split of the revenue we receive and splits it differently between levy or aid, so that it can jacky between those two categories year over year depending on either market value or our enrollment. Also, if we have voter-approved levies or bonds, that factors into our property tax levies. But there's also adjustments for, when I'm entering these levy inputs in August, for what's going to be our fiscal year revenue in 2027, you can imagine those are estimates that need to be adjusted to actual expenses at the end of that fiscal year. So tonight, if you want to switch to the next slide, thank you, we're asking the board just to certify our preliminary tax levy for calendar year '26, which is fiscal year 2027 for the district. We're asking the board to certify the levy at the maximum amount. We'll bring it back to the board for approval of an actual dollar amount in December at that truth in taxation hearing. Until the end of September, there are sometimes little calculation adjustments or input adjustments that are made at the state level that could affect that final tax levy dollar amount, which is why we don't ask the board to approve an actual dollar amount at this point, but rather to certify the levy at the maximum allowed. If you want to look at the numbers where they stand as of yesterday, you can see that our total pay '26 levy comes in at $5,374,763. A small portion of that, $100,000, is dedicated for community service and the remaining amount is split pretty evenly between our general fund and our debt service fund at about 49% each. Overall, this is a decrease from our pay '25 levy of about $75,000. Next slide, please. The general fund levy in total increased $3,800 from the pay '25 levy. With all of the calculations, you can see that there are increases and decreases between certain categories, but overall, you know, the increase is just shy of $4,000, so not a significant dollar amount. Next slide, please. When we look at our community education levy, there we're seeing a decrease of about $59,000, and that's primarily in our disabled school age care. We're able to levy for students that enroll in our school age care that maybe need some additional services or staffing. Again, that's an estimate that we're entering in August for services and enrollment that is going to occur two years down the road. So once the state sees those actual expenditures, they make the adjustment up or down to our levy. And in this particular year, you're seeing a decrease to that estimated amount. In our debt service fund, we're seeing a decrease from the prior year levy of about $20,000. Debt service is pretty simple, it's just based on our debt payment schedules. And we do the state mandates that we collect 105%, or levy 105% of our principal and interest payments on taxpayers in the event that not all taxpayers are making those payments. If they do make all of those payments, then we see a debt excess adjustment or a reduction to that levy. Then this is just a snapshot of a five-year look back at our calendar year levies, the total amounts, and you can see slight increases or decreases year over year. In this particular year for pay '26, based on the numbers that we have in front of us now, we're looking at a 1.39% decrease to our total levy amount. The five-year average is just shy of a 2% increase. So again, from here, we're going to ask the board to certify the maximum amount on our pay '26 levy tonight. And then we'll come back in December, Thursday, December 18th, to be exact, at 6:00 PM in this particular conference room. And you'll, we'll present a truth in taxation hearing, which includes more detailed information on the full property tax levy, the calculations, and where we ended up after the state gets through their final adjustments. Any questions for me on the preliminary tax levy? All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. So when we certify, excuse me, the maximum, we can't go up from that, we can only go down, stay where we're at or go down?
It allows for adjustments to the levy components if we certify that particular dollar amount that I had in the slides tonight and the state.
Right, yeah, okay, okay. All right, sounds good. Thank you. Okay, committee board member reports. Any volunteers to start? Charlie?
I don't have anything to report.
Okay, Darren?
Yeah, um, one of them goes all the way back to August here. I think we had a facilities committee late August, talked about the report that we're going to be reviewing here later this month, just to generalize some things in our properties that we have and conditions to look for LTF options. I had an arena board meeting, not much new there, we're getting ready for the ICE here and fixing some things, just to make sure they have a good winner with that. And I'll leave the rest up to everybody else.
We had an activities meeting, I think, last week, so we met with Joe Hadivar, and he went over numbers for all of the fall sports, which were pretty impressive, all the students that are involved in all of the extracurricular activities. Went over fundraisers, various, various things there. And then the school is still spraying for mosquitoes even on the city, is not. I think, and then I had the finance meeting, but we've been through all of that, so that's all I have.
Okay. Violet, Alan?
Yeah, looking up just into this next week, we have homecoming week coming up, that's exciting. Kicks off with a pep rally tomorrow, and then on Sunday is the Blue Jay Breakfast hosted by student council and team captains and homecoming court. Then there's the Bags Tournament on Wednesday, Dance on Thursday, and that's all culminates in the homecoming game on Friday. In addition to that, there's an MSU Choir Festival coming up in this next month, and Wasika was chosen to be the featured school to sing at this festival, so that's very exciting.
All right. Our homecoming week kind of kicks off with the Wasika Marching Classic that is up this coming Saturday. And we're also very excited for our Tackle Cancer football game tomorrow at 7:00. And there is a band business fundraiser that just got approved on Tuesday for the, I think it's band members or just someone, someone from just a band parent going around to some of the businesses downtown and putting a Blue Jay logo on the sidewalk in front of that business.
Okay, yeah, I know that is now.
I think they also do driveways, too.
I think so, too, yep. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
So we had a health and safety committee meeting, and it was all about health insurance and what's going on with that. And then we already covered finance and facilities.
We had a finance one, which we covered. Also, we had a policy committee, and most of the policies were unchanged, but we did talk a lot of the details about them, and also talked in depth about the new online policy, which comes up in our agenda as well, so.
Okay, we'll move on to recognitions, positive board feedback. Just want to note before we start that September is school board recognition month, and we'll have a little bit more on that towards the end of the meeting. So Grant, you want to keep us going?
I'll add on to what they had said, that the marching classic is this weekend, which is great for the community. There's a lot of work that's put together by the classic committee, which is Edna Burns and Mary Williams and Les Talugan, and I'm going to miss people, so there's a lot of people who put a lot of work into that, so thank you for everyone who does that. I think it's a real showcase for Wasika and for the bands and everything. The bands always have a very good time that day, so.
Okay, good.
So mine was going to be band classic, too, but it is interesting that there are 14 bands scheduled between the field show and the parade, so that's a lot of bands. It's going to be awesome to get out there and see it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to give a shout out to all of the people who are sponsoring the Wasika Marching Classic, and I also want to give a shout out to our tackle cancer sponsors that football players went around to businesses and asked for donations, which a lot of, we raised a lot of money for the Tackle Cancer Foundation.
And then I just want to mention the work that student council is putting into this upcoming week. Homecoming is their big thing, so almost everything aside from the classic. That's the pep rally, the Blue Jay Breakfast, Bags Tournament, the Dance, that's all done by student council and yeah.
I had that on mine, too. Thanks to student council for doing that whole homecoming work and congrats to homecoming court. Mini cheer camp is this week going on at the high school. I've seen those little kids running in and out, and they're going to be cheering at the football game tomorrow night, the Tackle Cancer football game. So fingers crossed that the weather cooperates and it doesn't rain for you guys. And then I just wanted to comment on the Randy Shaver interview that he did. If you haven't seen that, that's on YouTube, that's a nice little eight-minute interview with Daron Russell, so.
Yeah, thank you. Darren?
You know, just kind of a common theme comes around, I think we got it down here in our agenda, you talk about donations or fundraisers. Just want to thank everybody in our community that contributes to that. It seems like it kind of might be a numbing question because, you know, there's a lot of activities that utilize fundraisers and donation process to help fund, to give the kids a better experience in their activities and whatnot. So I just want to say thank you to everybody that contributes to that.
I'm full bore into soccer these days. I got a couple granddaughters playing soccer out of town, so I've been to a couple of them, but I've been to soccer games here in town, and it's good to see, good to see that sport being, but it isn't. The girls are doing really well. And as I was riding my bike down the Doobiebug Trail today, the cross-country team was out there running away. Of course, they got wet before I got home, but I think they did too, but it's good to see kids out and about and working and doing things, so.
So you were on your bike? Did they run past you?
No, I beat them.
Oh, good.
I had a little race going on there, you know.
Okay, thanks, everybody. We'll move on to action items then. Motion to approve item A.
I'll make a motion to approve item A, the acceptance of received gifts and donations.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Roll call, Amy.
Scott, Ellen?
Yes.
Grant Chappert?
Yes.
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Darren Gruger?
Yes.
Charlie Freed?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes. Motion for item B.
I'll make a motion to approve the adult meal prices for '25-'26.
I'll second.
Okay, anything there?
This is just in response to the Department of Ed increasing that minimum price, so even though we're, school lunch, you know, funding is healthy, we're staying with that minimum price.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of approving that, motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item C.
I'll motion to approve annual fundraisers.
Okay.
Second.
All right.
Well, I think just to clarify for all board members, since the driveway signs came up and the tackle cancer stuff came up, just to clarify, the activities committee reviewed our policy last week and made sure that we're following our board policy when it comes to fundraisers. If we have our activities, our school activities, so our football team is doing the cookie dough sales, or our baseball team's doing a saver card, that would come to the board then for approval like we're doing tonight with this list. What the booster clubs do or charity donations such as the tackle cancer, those wouldn't, those would not be of a policy that coming to the board for approval. So if you're hearing other things happening outside of these fundraisers, they're being done by parents or boosters or for charitable purposes. So that's why the difference of you might hear, how come some fundraisers are here and some are not? That's how the activities committee clarified with the policy last week and made sure we had all the right things on the list. The choir one was when we added sense to the activities committee meeting because we learned about that late last week when she submitted her form. So that's the purpose of, just wanted to clarify that in case anybody was wondering what, where some fundraisers went from.
Okay, thank you. All right, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item D.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual school trips as presented.
I'll second.
Okay.
What I would point out with this one is, you know, these are, these are standard trips that go every other year or every year, but because of the notion of the travel, then we're going to have the board approval for these extended field trips per our board policy. If there's something that would be a new trip or a new idea, we bring that to the board prior to, you know, the kind of wheels are in motion for some of these already because of the timing of them all. But we will ask all of these groups to come to our work session or board meeting after they get back and report on their trip for us. We think, I just thought personally me, I think that's more interesting than hearing about the planning on the front end, which we, it's pretty standard. We kind of know that we're going to approve that particular trip because we do it regularly. of know that we're going to approve that particular trip because we do it regularly. But I think it's more exciting to hear about the experiences the kids had once they got back. And so that's a little bit of the flip-flop of this, of this trip approval process that I hope meets the needs of the board.
Is the, is a choir trip now on, on their normal schedule?
Yes.
Instead of being?
Yes.
Good.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item E.
I approve that. I move that we approve the 2025-2027 master agreement with the food service staff.
Second.
Okay. Anything there?
The tentative agreement terms are located in your board packet, and all of these were really professional and positive processes that landed in a good spot for us.
Thank you. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item F.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025-27 master agreement with the paraprofessional staff.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item G.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025-2027 master agreement with the confidential employee group.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
And just to clarify for those maybe watching, the confidential employee group would be like our district office team. So, so Amy and the crew, plus a couple other employees would be that confidential group. So just so, in case anyone was wondering what that meant.
Okay, motion for item H.
I make a motion that we approve the 2025-2027 agreement with the independent contract employees.
Second.
Okay, can you, Eric?
You can see that list in your agenda, where those folks are. And so you're approving those, that slate at this time, and then we'll bring the additional ones as we come to the agreements with those. And those are also included in your Google, will include in your Google Drive.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of the motion to approve item H? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item I.
I'll make a motion, we approve the reviewed policies. That would be 608, 609, 611, 410, 426, and 612.1.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item J, we will acknowledge the first reading of revised policies, 624 online instruction revised, and 624 online learning options.
So this is, because it's a new policy, it would be, it's a second, it's a first and second reading process. So board members have the opportunity to look at it now, ask questions over the next several weeks, and then we would do a second reading in October to approve the new policy. So this is policy 624 per MSBA and per some of the legislative changes, has had a significant enough changes that it's a, it's a complete replacement of the policy. That's why it's, you're seeing two different policies on the links in that particular piece. The most significant difference is the old policy was essentially, if you, not to like to bring up this word, but if you think about pre-COVID online, that's what the old policy was written for. If you were taking an online class through a certified online school or through a, you know, a one-off we would do during study hall, we were allowed to do some of those kind of things based on old language. Current law states that you can now provide online instruction to students in your own district if you'd like. If you want to open enroll students, you still have to be in a certified accredited online school. We're not. So our students who are going full-time online are part of our partnership with Otana Online, as we're doing that right now. But it does give us the flexibility if we, if we have a student here or there that needs to do a class online or needs to do partially at home for a couple of weeks because they have a health thing coming on, we can do that. So those are the most significant differences in the law that requires the change in the policy for that process. So as you review what the new 624 looks like, you're not going to notice it, it's subtly different than the old one, but this is the current MSBA updated model, what we're proposing. And Grant, is there anything else that you can remember from the policy committee meeting to point out there? Okay.
Okay, motion to approve, or motion for item K.
I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent goals.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that anymore? Questions? All right. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item L.
I'll make a motion to approve the school board three-year work plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion or questions on that? Nope. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item M.
I'll make a motion to approve the, certifying the maximum payable 2026 levy.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item N.
I'll motion to approve staff sharing with NRTG.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second. Anything there, Eric?
Well, you'll see these next three items are the standard sharing of staff that we do with our, our local regional partners. You know, these occupational therapists or a third-party billing specialist. These are not positions that require full-time employment for any of the districts of our size. And so based on working with our partners, we're able to support students' needs, but also be able to have full-time staff or enough of an FTE to make it worthwhile for staff to do those jobs.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item O.
I'll make a motion to approve the staff sharing with team.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item P.
I'll make a motion to approve the staff sharing agreement with JWP.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And then like we previously mentioned, September is School Board Recognition Month. I'm going to read something here. It says, "In recognition of September as School Board Recognition Month in Minnesota, we take this opportunity to thank the members of the Wasika Public Schools Board for their commitment and service to our students, staff, and community. Our board members dedicate countless hours to guiding the vision and policies that shape our schools, ensuring that every decision reflects the best interests of our learners. They provide local leadership, uphold the values of public education, and work diligently to balance responsibility, accountability, and opportunity. We are grateful for their dedication and the positive impact they make each day in helping all Wasika students succeed." And.
And in recognition of School Board Appreciation Month, we really wanted to, as a district, recognize the work you do to support all of our, all of our kids. And so it sometimes helps to know where to make the call to get the donation for what you need. But I'm going to enjoy presenting each of you with $25 in Blue Jay bucks this evening to be spent at the school store. So that's where you can use it, is at the school store. So we're able to, to get the appropriate donations for that. So each of you can upgrade your Blue Jayware as you need to, to go on from there. Because we really appreciate the work that you are doing. So, and I wish I could take credit for this cute Blue Jay buck, but you know, who did the work on that one. So, but seriously, I think people sometimes can get the false impression that it's just coming to two meetings a month and, and, you know, talking to people from time to time. But I know, and we know as a district leadership team, the hours you put in to support our kids and to support us as staff, and it is very much appreciated. So thank you for that.
Thank you for the kind words. Upcoming items, reminders, work session coming up here pretty quick on Thursday, October the 2nd. And our next regular business meeting will be, because of MEA, will be on Thursday, October the 23rd.
And I will just acknowledge my own mistake, as I had put it on the 16th before, because that was just always on my calendar. But we, the calendar should be adjusted now for you now. But the 23rd is what we approved in our January calendar, so it is sticking it through. We just had our error in the calendar invites. So we got that adjusted now.
Okay. Otherwise, you'd have been the only one here.
It might have been, right. And that might have been a quick meeting.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion to adjourn and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.